Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the North Bend City Council Regular Session Agenda Meeting for Tuesday, November 23, 2021, 7:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands alone nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Welcome, everybody, tonight. Welcome to the council and the staff members here, the staff members online, anybody who's watching live or recorded for a later date. After calling the meeting to order tonight, we're going to go through our consent calendar. We've got several items on this tonight, A, B, and C.
And?
Is there a D, Mr. City Administrator? We have, A is the minutes from the September 28th meeting. We looked at these last night, and I believe there was no changes. B is the League of Oregon Cities Council Coordinated Homeless Response Letter. We had some discussion about this last night as well. It's a support letter. And C was, we heard from our police department, about a liquor license to be issued. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent calendars presented.
I'll second.
All right. I hear a first and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of passing the consent calendar as presented, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion carries. All right. Number four, or I'm sorry, number three tonight is public comment. I do not see anybody online, and I don't have any papers before me. As a reminder to our citizens, there is a way to make public comment. You want to make sure that you go to our city website. There's a link available in there. I believe we want the public comment for the meetings by 1:00 p.m. the day of. There's lots of ways to get information from the city. We do have Facebook pages. I have an individual Facebook page, but those are not public forums. Those are a way for us to disseminate information. If you do want to speak to the council and to have a statement read into the record, there's a very official way to do that, and so please use our public forum for that. Okay, number four on the agenda tonight is our committee openings. We had some discussion last night on that. We have information on our packet on page 12. We have, is there, we want to make sure that we're following our council rules, so really, so to, instead of, before going into a discussion, I'll ask if there is a motion.
To do what?
Well, the approved, or the, the staff recommendation would be to approve the application period of November 24th through December 31st with appointments at the January 2022 meeting. So, if we wanted to have a discussion, we would want to have a motion first.
I'll make a motion. We approve the staff recommended application period of November 24th through December 31st with appointments at our first meeting in January.
Okay, so I have a first. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a second. The second is to approve the application period of November 24th through December 31st with appointments at January 2022 meeting. Now is there discussion?
I'm aware that there had been several applications to the Parks Committee starting back in April.
Correct.
And I don't see any reason for those people to have to reapply. I would like to ask that those be brought forward at our next meeting, I suppose, rather than have them reapply because they applied back in April.
And we did have a different set of council rules at the time.
That's, council rules still provided for appointments to committees, and I do not see why they should have to reapply.
Okay, I'll take that into consideration. Okay. So, we have, we had the first and the second. Was there any other?
Yeah, could, could you outline what, what places those applications are for?
Yeah. So, let's go to that on the page.
13.
Oh, it was in the, it was in the work session packet last night.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah.
I got all that, but you said there were applications, so I was just wondering, somebody applied for the planning commission, or?
Yeah, I, you know.
Somebody applied for?
I know, I'm going to look to our attorney and city administrator on this one about the, we'll open up the application period, probably to be best and fair for all, we're going to want to start the process from the beginning. We can certainly reach out to the individuals who've applied and encourage them if the form has changed or anything like that.
So, Madam Mayor, the form has not changed. The council sets its open and close period, so that's an act of the governing body. You have a motion to open and then close. Certainly, staff always goes back and makes sure that anyone who has applied is interested, and we let them know. We post it in the newspaper. We post it on our website. We post it on the Facebook page, letting folks know what's open, what's available, and what the process is. And then, as those applications come in, we present them to you at your January meeting. So, you have an established process. It's the same process you followed last year.
Okay.
So, you don't have an alocarp process, if you will.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. And then, Counselor Slater, did you want, was there some discussion about the open positions, or were you thinking you wanted to use?
No, no, I, I was trying to understand a motion that my, my understanding would go along somewhat with what you said, which essentially, here's the listing of opportunities, and we have a process to do, and so forth. Understood that, but the motion led me to believe that you had applications in on those particular things.
No.
I hadn't seen any of that.
No.
So, I guess I was looking for a clarification on it.
Yeah. So, yes, so to clarify, the motion is to approve the application period from November 24th. Well, just that we're, we're opening the application period and the process from November 24th to December 31st.
I, I think I understand where you're coming. All right, so, the motion is to essentially authorize applications to be received between November 24th and December 31st with appointments occurring. And so, when we open up that period, we're publishing and basically soliciting any and everyone to submit applications. When those applications come in, they'll be compiled, and they'll be sent to the mayor and included in your packet.
Yeah, well, that's clear, and that makes sense. I appreciate that.
Yeah. Okay, so, let me see, Counselor Nordoff has her hand up. She's already spoken. Is there anybody else that has a comment or a question? Was there some new information that you wanted to add, Counselor?
Yes, it has not historically been the case that we wait to fill openings on these commissions until the application process opens up in December. There have been numerous times when you become aware of an opening and somebody is appointed. That has been routinely how the council is operating.
And I am aware that the process wasn't followed correctly before, but we do have our council rules, and we are going to follow them correctly. So, I have a first and a second. We've had discussion. All in favor of approving the application period of November 24th through December 31st with appointments at the January 2022 meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Now, that was our committee openings. Number five on the agenda tonight is our request for authorization on Brussels Street project. We did hear from the Public Works Director last night. There is information on page 15 of your packet. There's a staff recommendation to authorize, to extend the contract for the Brussels Street project to cover the unit price addition of $15,600. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve and authorize to extend the contract for Brussels Street project to cover the unit price addition of $15,600.
Okay, I heard a first from Counselor Garboden.
Second.
A second from Counselor Slater. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the authorization to extend the contract for the Brussels Street project to cover the unit price addition of $15,600, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number six on the agenda tonight is the sole source procurement for purchase of Rapid Attack vehicles for North Bend Fire Department. We did hear from our wonderful fire chief last night, and on page 16, we have a, let's see, the staff recommend, the stat, or the suggested motion would be to approve the finding presented, and we would authorize staff to publish a seven-day notice of determination that goods are available from only one source. That, that is the recommended, recommendation from the staff, is that we have to go through that process.
Okay, all through the finding presented, and authorize staff to publish the seven-day notice of determination that goods are available only from one source.
Okay, I heard a first from Counsel Richardson.
Second.
I heard a second. Who said the second?
Larry.
A second from Counselor Garboden. Thank you. Is there any discussion on this? We had lots of detailed information from our wonderful police chief last night. Thank you. So.
I just have a comment.
Fire, what am I saying?
Forget it.
I tried so hard.
Police come up.
I tried so hard to, but you're up next. The wonderful police chief has detailed information.
Yeah, but she doesn't have a police department jacket.
Please. You're both wonderful. Chiefs. Anyways, was there any further comments? I think I heard a comment.
But my comment is, is that, like we talked about in the work session, is that these Rapid Attack vehicles will be much more inexpensive to run to a quick scene, you know, where we don't need the, the big truck. It's going to save fuel. It's going to save time. It's going to save, you know, wear and tear on these trucks.
Yeah.
Older, and, you know, I mean, he did a great presentation. If anybody wants it, we have it here.
Yeah.
And it's just, you know, and I guess the bottom line is, it's not going to cost the taxpayers any money because we have the ARPA fund money to pay for it. So.
And it's, it is a good point that, you know, we go over the details of this in the work session to get the thorough information. So, if there's anybody watching just the council meeting, go back and watch the work session from the night before, and you can see all the information. It's a good point.
Thank you.
Okay. There's not anything else. We have a first and a second, and we had some discussion. So, all in favor of approving the finding presented and authorize the staff to publish a seven-day notice of determination that the goods are available from only one source, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so that was number six, sole source. Our wonderful fire chief. Now.
I'm going to go to the police chief.
So, now we are on number seven, which is purchase of police vehicles. And last, again, last night, we had some detailed information about this. There's our notes and suggested motion on page 20 of your packet. Do we have a motion here? The bottom of page 20 is what we had looked at.
So, question.
You should have a motion first before we go into discussion.
Okay, sorry.
But the suggested motion was that the staff recommends the approval to purchase these board vehicles.
Okay, that's fine. Staff, I'll make a motion that the staff recommend the approval to purchase these board vehicles through Whittonal Dodge in contract with Wireworks LLC to outfit these vehicles.
Okay.
Second.
I heard a first from Counsel Richardson, second from Counselor Slater, and a third, I think, from Garboden. And so, yes, is there any discussion on this? Counselor Richardson, did you want to add something?
Well, just that we discussed yesterday in the work session that we have these three portions of this, this resolution, and I want to make sure that we're doing what we need to be doing.
So, Madam Mayor, for clarification of the council, so that we have transparency for the public, in your fiscal year '22 budget, you have $215,000 for four new patrol cars. We were able to secure the last final two vehicles in the state of Georgia, which are the 2021 models. The?
State of Oregon.
Oregon. What state did I say?
Ever.
Oh, yeah, okay.
It's in the water.
Okay, so, y'all, we're going to get some vehicles, and we're going to go, okay, so, sorry about that. Well, they were cheaper in Georgia. So, it's, we got a peach of a deal. So, in the state of Oregon, we have gotten the last 21 models. They were actually still in production. They're not just sitting somewhere. They're, they're the last ones coming off coming here because they had already pre-ordered some additional. So, we got lucky. Those are 2021. We have to fully outfit those vehicles, so we have to put in the radios. We have to put in the, the back trunks, and then we have to, you know, put all the nice extra electronics on them, like cameras. We then, we had put out a RFP on the street and had received bids, competitive bids, and while we were on the street, the 2022 model ordering had just opened up. And that doesn't mean that we're going to get 2022 vehicles in a week or two. They're going to take months. So, what we are proposing, because it's going to take so long, is that you have approved four in your budget. The 2022 vehicles are slightly more expensive than the 21s, imagine that. So, what we're proposing is use the $215,000, and it will be supplemented by $147,200 of your ARPA funds. Then, in your next fiscal year, we'll come back for the two additional cars. So, as I explained in the work session, this is actually better, better, I actually went back and did the math, better than buy one, get one free. You're actually getting more free than you're actually buying. But this will actually get us in succession of starting to get these older models off, reduce our costs, the V8s, the repairs, everything. In fact, I think we just had two or three just come back from repairs. And then, the taxpayers will not be asked to actually have tax dollar money, their tax dollar money, go towards any vehicles at the earliest in 2024. So, does that help with the transparency? So, what we do is we do it as a, a, a package blanket. So, yes, we buy the cars, and they're coming off state contract. We then actually then send them and outfit them. There's only basically one outfitter so that you don't have a hodgepodge. You want the vehicle's done. And so, we are doing this as a collective purchase, if you will. So, you are authorizing, if you see, see fit, to authorize the four vehicles purchased from Whittonal Dodge, and also with the Wireworks LLC to outfit those. And then, you know, we're using the balance, the, the remaining balance of the $215 of this year's fiscal, which was budgeted for the four cars. And then, we'll start the process of two, and then, soon as July 1st gets here, we'll hit you in the July meeting and get the other two cars in, in line.
Yeah.
It could potentially take how long to get those 2022 cars? If?
It could be towards the end of the year.
Yeah, it's going to be a while. They're just not going to show up. So, we're trying to get in as fast as we can. There's a nationwide shortage, and everyone's grasping. So, we're just trying to get at the beginning of the line, if you will, because we're behind the eight ball.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, we had a, we had a first and a second. We've had some discussion. All in favor of the recommendation to approve, or the motion to approve the purchase of the four vehicles through Whittonal Dodge in contract with Wireworks LLC to outfit these vehicles, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, we are on to number eight on the agenda, which is to, it's an authorization to enter into an additional agreement with ODOT, Oregon Department of Transportation's Safe Routes to School projects. And there is some additional work that needs to be done. We did hear from our Public Works Director in the work session, if anybody wants to go back and watch that for more details. Page 31, we have a staff recommendation of the council, and it would be, it would be, I guess the recommended motion would be to authorize staff to sign agreement, an agreement with ODOT and change order to the contract with Lasky Clifton.
I'll, I'll make a motion that the city council pending approval of the council, authorize staff to sign an agreement, number 73000-0004446 with ODOT and change order to the contract with Lasky Clifton.
Okay. I hear a first. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second? Who was the second? Was that Counselor Nordoff? Were you the second?
Second.
Second, or a second from Counselor Slater?
Either way.
You?
Doesn't make any difference.
So, is there any further discussion on this? All in favor of authorizing the pending approval of council authorize staff to sign agreement, 73000-0004446 with ODOT and a change order to the contract with Lasky Clifton, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, Safe Route School. Number nine is action, if any, resulting from executive session. We did have an executive session last night that requires an action. And on November 9th, Judge Martin Stone issued a written opinion on case number 21-CV-31623. The judge found that the governing body made a procedural error in considering the motion made at his June 8th, 2021 meeting, city council meeting, regarding Counselor Nordoff's committee assignments. The judge ordered the council to reinstate Counselor Nordoff to those committee assignments. So, we could consider a motion.
I would move to reinstate Counselor Nordoff to her previous committee assignments.
I'll second.
All right. I hear a first and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor to reinstate Counselor Nordoff to her previous committee assignment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, that was our action for executive session. Number 10 on the report tonight is our, or number 10, we have our city administrators' report.
I'm going to be very brief tonight. Today, the city of North Bend was awarded a $56,000 technical assistance grant from the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development to conduct an economic opportunities analysis. This is very much like an economic forecast, and it will look at the future economic needs, everything from employment to types of businesses, land, and industries for our community. And the staff will be providing $19,000 in kind services towards that grant, so we're appreciative of that. That brings the total of grants and allotments to the city as of July 1st to just north of 4.61, yeah, 4.6 million that are to the benefit of the city and the taxpayers. And I'll just stop there. The rest of the report's online. Anyone can go to our website and pull up the city administrator report.
Thank you, Mr. City Administrator. Again, I appreciate you keeping those online as a reminder to the public. Those are not public forums, so we use that to disseminate information, but we have lots of formal ways through the public comment that you can reach out if you want to contact us and make a statement at a city council meeting. So, thank you. City administrator report is complete. Was there any committee reports? All right. No committee reports. So, council comments. We'll go ahead and start down here with Counselor Nordoff.
I appreciate being reinstated to committees, and I'll try to do a good job, and I'll try to have good decorum, now that I have some practice.
Oh, thank you, Counselor Nordoff.
One thing, I got an email today from a concerned citizen about some homeless camping impacts on his immediate neighborhood, and I'm not sure what I should do with this, but I hope that our committee to look at our ordinance dealing with homeless camping can meet fairly shortly.
All right.
And my other comment would be, I, I'm not sure that our council rules address when people, because people don't wait until the end of the year to resign from committee appointments. And so, what we need to understand, I guess, what we tell people, if, when there's an opening, do we leave it unfilled until the end of the year? Because I'm not sure that that is spelled out in our council rules.
Yeah.
So, I think that's a valid question, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Slater?
Yeah, well, there's lots of interesting things to talk about, but I, I just want to focus on one thing. We've got Thanksgiving coming up on Thursday, and if, if you see the news and the other things, we're sort of encumbered with negativism. And if there isn't something negative, people try to find it that way. I, I guess what I challenge everybody to do is celebrate with your family, with your friends, with the way during this COVID time, we've expanded the whole idea of neighborhood and taking care of each other. Look at all the good that's around you, and the, and the value and the privilege we have of living in this country, and, and celebrate it together, and just appreciate each other.
Thank you. Counselor Richardson?
I'll tag onto that a little bit. What we've done, this is a work, we, you know, I think we should take it everywhere, is that every day you should write down what you're thankful for.
Mm-hmm.
Because there's a lot of things to be thankful for. And, you know, I'm thankful my family's here. Don't get to see them a lot. They're here, and we're going to enjoy it. You know, just like I said, I'm thankful for that. Thankful for a lot of things. Thankful to be on this council.
Thank you.
It's a lot of fun. Sometimes it's entertaining. Most of the time, it's a lot of fun. I mean, it really is. Interact with people that are from all different walks of life. It's like probably one of the best things ever for me. So, anyway, that's all I have.
All right. I think Counselor Garboden is going to lend me his time tonight to list all the things that I'm thankful for. I, you know what, Counselor Nordoff, I also have received a message to that concerned citizen about the, what's going on with the homeless. And, and, and it, you know, this, I can use this time to let the public know that we are working on several things. We're actually doing quite a bit right now. We're aggressively surveying the citizens of North Bend to find out information and feedback from them, because this is a community decision on what we're going to do. We know that we need to come up with an ordinance that describes time, place, and manner. And I've said all along, time's easy, manner's easy. I need you to come and help us figure out, where's the place in North Bend that we're going to, we're going to do this?
North Bend.
And it cannot be a decision made lightly. We really have to consider a lot of things. Look at the way that our town is. We are surrounded by water, and then we are surrounded by land. So, wherever we decide the place that we're being mandated by the state, it's going to affect somebody who lives in North Bend. And I, I don't have the answer right now.
No.
I don't, I don't know if anybody here has the answer. So, please come with, come to us with suggestions. We need to hear what you want to do. Just being upset about it isn't going to be helpful. We have to come up with a solution together. So, in the meantime, we are securing funding for a resource officer in the community. I think that could be really helpful to work with the police department. We are working with the city of Coos Bay and the county for a grant that could be, if we got this grant, it would be $2 million over two years to really look at some of the larger issues. So, we're doing things. It might not feel like it right now. We're working with businesses. We're talking to them. We're trying to come together as a community, but it's not, this, this, the issue and the place that we're in right now did not happen overnight, and it is not going to be solved overnight. So, I believe the survey is almost closed, but we have, I'm actually very happy with the amount of feedback that we've got so far. So, we're going to start sorting through that. And we will also be looking at other things that we can do to get, again, solutions. It's not going to help if we just say, not in my backyard, and I don't want, we really need to come together and figure out the best solution for all the citizens in North Bend and our neighbors. So, lots of things to be thankful for. We have a really great radio station in town, KDOC, that puts on Bus Jam. I'm going to my notes here to see the exact date. It's the 20, the 4th of December. And now, you may be aware that there's a bus that will be at By Mart in North Bend and a bus that's in Coos Bay. All of this is good and goes to?
North Bend.
What's that?
I should go to North Bend.
Counselor Slater, I hear you, and I appreciate that. The competitive streak is right there with me. I, I would love it. All this go, all of the items, the food, the toys, they do go to help people in the community. So, the overall goal is helping people, but I want to win.
But we want to win.
Okay, so, some of me, some of you may have heard that Mayor Benetti and I went to the McCays in Coos Bay, and we had a 90-second shopping spree to grab as much food as possible. He may or may not have cheated. It's He may or may not have cheated. The jury is still out on how that all went down, but we did kick off the event with having over $1,000 worth of food donated. So I will tell you, go drop the items off at the bus at the Buy Mart, and then if you come out for the holiday parade, I think we're going to have a truck out there, probably maybe one of the fire trucks. I've heard Sparky from the fire department will be there, I'll be there, and we can stuff the truck. So bring your food and bring your items, and then, you know, we'll have a little bit of North Bend pride. So we are... We are two different towns, but we are one community, but I still want to beat Mayor Benetti. Now, lastly, the last thing that I want to add tonight is congratulations to all the sporting teams in the community. Marshfield is going to state. You know, you guys know I'm a bulldog through and through, but I am so happy for our neighbors, and we want to root them on and wish them safe travels. I believe Kokil is also playing in a championship game in their division, so that's a really big deal for them. So please, thank safe, healthy thoughts for all of the people traveling and the coaches that put in their time, and they're going to make the whole community proud.
So, question?
Yes.
The parade... Not the parade itself, but the lighted area?
Yeah.
What night is that?
Yes. So actually, I'm going to heed the rest of my time here to the city administrator. See, Larry, you gave me your time, and I took it. We have... So these are the... So mark your calendars, public, if you're watching. We have the... We're going to start with the virtual tree lighting. Actually, our city recorder probably can hand... Oh, I love it!
So we are so excited.
Yeah.
So our park superintendent, Brian Owen, and Chloe, who works in parks, had to do some special fabrication today. And so if you go over and see the tree at the community center, it's got a big, huge, beautiful star. And so we just posted some photos on Facebook shortly, moments before this meeting. And so that's the virtual tree lighting, and that is happening the first...
Yep.
At...
Dusk.
Dusk, which is like, you know, we're going to go live on Facebook.
Yeah.
And so that's not to say that folks can't come in their cars and like, watch it, you know, but it's going virtual just so that we can protect. Or it has it... Santa Claus actually may make an appearance. We do not know. But virtually, we just don't want to crowd Santa. We've got to keep them healthy and the elves. Then, on Friday, December 3rd, from 6:00 to 9:00, we'll have the Christmas cruise. And I got some secret information today that just touched my heart, but I'm not going to blow it. You're just going to have to go.
Okay.
What the staff is doing is just blowing us away. You think last year's was great? This is even better. They're taking it over the top, and we've got more participation. So that's going to be at the community building. You'll actually enter from Santa Lane on Broadway, and if all goes well, we won't accidentally close down the state highway again. Meanwhile, we'll have then on Saturday, December 4th, at 5:30, the Christmas parade. However, we invite everyone to come over to Pony Village Mall, starting at noon. The trucks will be setting up. We'll have food trucks back there. We'll have a sock throw. We'll have special events. We want you to go to our city Facebook page, our city website, and see all that. And as the mayor said, you know, don't hesitate to bring your whatever final gifts. We'll make sure they get over to the Bus Jam afterwards. And I kid you not, I'm just so touched of what our businesses and business communities doing. We've had businesses downtown, like Pedal the Meadow, go out of their way and really decorate and really doll up some of the light poles. Eagles Furniture has stepped up, and you're going to see a huge lighted entrance to the city thanks to their cooperative efforts. So the community's starting to step up and say, you know, this COVID stuff, we're going to take it to the next step. The reason I mention all that is because if you go to our website, there is the holiday decorating contest for Christmas. Who's going to out-griswad who? And let me tell you, I've been driving through the community, there's some light displays that are really going over the top this year. So it'll be residential and business. We'll be out. All the information's online. We want you to sell out your neighbor. So if they're sort of taking all your power, go to our website, report them on our spirit contest. We'll go check it out, take a photo, and decide whether or not they've been naughty or nice. So back to you, Madam Mayor.
I like it. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.